...that we've done in the past. The one that I had to kind of work up another little handout that I wanted to do a little comparison with. This is the, this year was the end of our eight-year program. And in the pavement management plan on page, they call it page two, exactly, the third page here. It's a little bar graph that shows as of right now where we're at with our roads in terms of the pacer ratings. Now what I've done, that I put together, and you're going to say, well, this is really upside down and all backwards, right? Well, it's not because, don't ask me why. I didn't do this. This is what our consultant engineering firm did initially back in 2016, or the blue bar graphs, okay? And you'll notice that the Seal Code roads only went from one to five. Now they go from one to 10 in terms of their ranking. So what I had to do was flip them this way so you can kind of get a comparison and see the situation. Basically, we're done with our eight-year program. We started out with in terms of trying to get all of our roads improved, particularly chipped and sealed. Now, what I'm trying to show more than anything else is that this is like the last half, the last four years of our program. Because we don't, we didn't have to rate our roads back when we first started the eight-year program. So I don't have anything on that to compare. So this is like the second half comparison. But basically what you're going to see is, and these are, this is flipped this way because this is the one here and this is the one down here. So essentially what I'm trying to tell you by the bar graph is that we're back in here four years ago, more in the middle. All of our roads were some average, I'm going to say average, and they're not so good, right? And what we've done, we've shifted, and you can see where now all of our roads are good or better. So basically, it just is a, a bar graph technique or way of saying, okay, hey, we're making improvements there. Our roads are getting better, and we're making progress in having good roads in Carroll County. So, one's for Seal Code, depending on which side you're looking at. To me, this is the left-hand side, and our asphalt roads in particular are making real good improvement in terms of moving along to the better situation. So it's just a way of saying, hey, number one, we've got our pavement management plan done. This had to be submitted by December the first, and we got that done the first of last week, which is before Thanksgiving. So now we're good to go. It's hard submitting our community crossings grant application. So we're good there, and then this just is a way of kind of a comparison and say, hey, as a county, we're making progress on our roads.
Hey, what? I like the graphs. It looks like we have numerically proven what I think most of us can see is a very dramatic improvement on the roads.
I agree with that.
Yeah. I look back over many years where we were doing very well. My wife and I were running the Coca-Cola while we were on my way around it. It used to be that you'd never bounce into Coca-Cola when you got to Howard County, which got a better road. Now, the way we went, hit a worse road going into Howard County. I like that. Most of Howard County had pretty good roads, but we knew too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything anyone out here has to bring up, or they've got to bring up, okay?
Start the sore subject. It's jail situation.
Larry, start again.
Start the sore subject. Jail situation, you know, sizing, and I, all I do is read the paper and I can't get to all of them. Has anybody analyzed the full cost of the jail, the probation department, the prosecutor department when the size of the jail? Do we really know what size jail the state mandated us to have? And what's it going to cost to operate at at different levels? You're concerned about what it costs for jail. I'd just leave you spend full fifteen million dollars and reduce the size twenty-five percent. Because it'll take twenty-five percent less to run it. You've got to have more prosecutors, you've got to have more probation departments, and you have a bigger jail. Is anybody running analysis on this total cost accounting? You only talk about cost of building. I want to know what the cost of total cost is. There's, there's more than just the cost of the building. When I do, when I do a job, there's cost of running every day when you're done with it. Then there's cost of backup. Probation department's got to have something to do with jails. Those are prosecutors. You build a big jail, prosecutors won't fill it. I guarantee it.
Yes, they will.
And I'd just leave you spend fifteen million dollars and say, hey, we can build twelve. I heard somebody say there, they will have to build a smaller jail. We ran out of money. We'll build a smaller jail to start with. We don't need a bigger one. I just, from a taxpayer point of view, what's the total cost of the project?
Do you have an answer for that?
No, I don't have. In Adams County, over the building up to, well, Adams County, I don't know where it is. They didn't pull this out, and also Fulton County has built an identical jail, actually. They have comparable fill-in, size-wise, numbers-wise.
The county's the same size?
Population, no, I said Fulton County. I talked to the sheriff. He basically said, we, you know, we weren't going to use the whole jail. He said that's what they want, so.
You weren't building?
They're thinking they're, they're going to fill it eventually, so. I don't know. I kind of have issues with, if you overbill it, you will fill it. But yet again, there's a reason to bill us, is to get people on the streets, you know, to get, cause issues and problems.
Do you have numbers on what's the total cost of running things through the, the cost, you got the cost of jail, it should be more efficient. Should be a lot less to run the jail for bed with the new adversity old one. But what's the cost of backup prosecutor and the probation department? You know, prosecutor is kind of looking for a different air position, right? Asking for a position for an investigator?
Yes, sir.
Right.
So how much, you know, this has all got to do with, you know, compared to where we were three years ago, where we are today on total cost of the project. I just think you're missing some numbers here that's important.
I, I think you're right in it. The total cost of operating a jail is very important to us. And as we, as you have said, and been told, that any operating cost will not be significantly more on the new jail than what they were on the old one. Certainly maintenance, things like that will be, will be less. With the new jail designs, instead of having a linear jail like you have, you can have a plot jail where fewer people can monitor more people. But, no, we do not have it. Right down to it, and I, on numbers, and I don't know if you, if you could, just cannot think of. I guess you don't really know how much it's going to cost to heat that facility until you see the bill come in. And I think there's a lot of things that are at play. I don't know that on my whole, I don't know what it's going to cost. If I'm building a new house, I don't know what it's going to cost me for sure, but I can get some idea. And the more we have like that, the better off we'd be of numbers.
So we're taking care of a hundred inmates over there. What's the cost of probation department at here? How many more people we got to add here to support that bigger number?
Well, okay, let me, let me make sure I'm understanding your questions, Jeff. We have a hundred people out there, and what about probation?
Is it going to cost to have to have more people in probation department take care of those? You got more people in prosecutor department to take care of? That's a cost that's going to, going to come, come and pass.
The more, more people we have arrested, the more people we're going to have to have probation officers and all that to watch over. That's a given, it.
Yes.
That's the way it works. On the other hand, how do you evaluate how much it costs to have out here in society that are not being monitored and watched for the work? And making sure that they're incarcerated when they need to be? There's certainly a cost to that, to the people of the county. I don't know, Jeff. I wish I could just lay out every number to you, and, but I, I can't. I know that this morning, on the way into the meeting, Judge Fauntz caught me, and he's, the two judges and I guess probation department together are all wanting to add a work release program to the jail. And wanting us to look at that very, very seriously, which we haven't till now had a work release program. However, the one that Lauren and I saw in Decatur, which is Adams County and designed by the same architectural firm, it does have a work release program, yeah. And it. Your judges love a work release program. They love, they like to put people in that kind of program rather than just putting them in jail. So that they're, they can continue to support their families, they can continue to hold their jobs, they won't lose their jobs. It's a good situation, but at the same time, there are problems with it in that if you've got, anytime you've got people coming in and out of the jail, you've got a problem with what comes in and out with them. And you have to really, really monitor that, coming in and out. There you go. It requires more people watching who's coming in the door and how they're coming in and, and, you know, checking if they're not bringing in drugs, weapons, anything else like that. Unfortunately, the costs just keep going and going and going. Every time we make a modernization, more costs come. I guess I could say the same thing about, we asked the audience today about electronic money handling. Now, I've been around long enough that I was sitting on the council back when we first really dedicated to going all computer in the courthouse. And, oh, this was going to eliminate positions in the courthouse, and we were going to run on fewer people, it was going to be better. No way here that has come true. It takes more people, it takes more technical assistance, it's, everything is more expensive than what it was predicted to be. It just did not work. I, I myself, you know, we have to watch out all the time now for security on our, on our computer systems and everything. Because somebody in Russia could get ahold of our information. I'm not sure we would have worked better off if we had ledger books and didn't have computers. Because you have to actually come in the building here to get, tap into that. But Jeff, you brought up some great points, and if you know a way for us to get that, I'd appreciate it. Because I don't know how to get to all those numbers.
Has there been a county of our size that's done, has there been a county of our size that's done something like this?
We've been in association more with Fulton County. They have, they've done studies of how much work can outlast them? Well, they, they have, I think you said, what, twenty? I can't, I can't repeat the figures. Okay, I estimate, they were twenty million, I believe, twenty-two or something like that.
What is your total operating cost of all this, you know, probation and the prosecutor?
Operation.
And, and everything compared to what it is now?
Yeah, I figured about the operation, we just couldn't.
It would be interesting.
They're not going to need it. And I thought, well, there's a facility we could transfer, but it'd take a lot of people out of the county. At times, housing out of the county, so.
Would it be interesting? We'd probably see the cost more to house prisoner, prisoner now than it did then, total cost. It doesn't usually go down. They think it's going to down, but usually it doesn't go down.
It continues to go up, you know, now. There's different ways to look at it. I kind of think maybe that the state might enforce more people, everybody going to jails. They might enforce putting more people from prison in the county jail system. Not what I think could happen. We look at, I mean, we need to protect citizens, the good citizens of this county, and we need to keep, keep them safe. Make that separation, and we need a facility. Well, so that they, basically, it's too small. How big, how big do you need to be? Who knows what the future holds? I hope it goes the other way, but I'd be very pessimistic about it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you bringing it up.
I have another handbag here.
Morning.
Morning.
Okay, should have, this is a topic. Last week being a short week, didn't get a chance to get on the agenda, but Tuesday evening, the APC meeting, my board approved the description and job description for the position of admin assistant from part-time to full-time. So the next process will be, give your guys a blessing. Really all they did was tweak a couple words in it. Other than that, we sent it to our company called Irwin. And that's what they recommended, and they liked it, so basically I'm just asking for your guys' approval, and then I'll go on to the next step.
Okay, so the area planning commission is planning on taking or adding a full, full-time position rather than a part-time?
Correct. What's, what's there announced, part-time, and we're going to transfer that to full-time. So that's what the job description tells. This was already drawn up several years ago. Like I said, I just tweaked a couple things, presented to Beth, and to present to Irwin. They were okay with it pretty quick, so thank you to Beth for helping me get this. It's a process, so with this, I have a couple more steps after you guys either approve or decline. And I'd like to get this done before the first day of the year.
Ted, what, what is our, what we need to do on the part of area planning, wanting to add, switch the administrative assistants to full-time?
It's been approved by the council already, so.
You should probably approve the full-time position also.
Yes, sir. They need a full-time person.
Absolutely.
See, this is, this is just what Jeff was talking about, is really adding, you do one thing, and then you add another position. And you need to add more positions, and just keep growing.
As government is best. As government is best. That's what government's always done.
Yeah, and as a conservative.
I have to disagree with that, Jeff, because there's been a lot of different offices in here that have lost, lost people.
How much?
Community grows.
Overall, are we down in the courthouse numbers of employees?
Yes.
From say ten years ago, we had less employees now than we did then?
Yes, I know. I know the auditor's office is, the assessor's office is.
I don't think area plan has ever had anybody other than a director in a part-time. So this will be when the council approves this.
And to be honest, they used to be in the auditor's office, so they helped us, and we helped them. So when they moved out, and that was a different situation.
Of course, I remember when they were in there. Why, why didn't, why did they move out? I forget. You weren't part of it or part of it?
I, I don't know, but why we're on that topic, if I may.
I don't know. I'm sorry I brought it up, because I don't want to back in here.
Are you thinking about moving?
I know. I shouldn't have said that. But I think Doug wanted his own office, to be honest. I don't, I really, I really don't know that.
Tom wanted to move out of that office into, out there.
Oh, I don't know that either.
Yeah.
I remember that. He did not want to be back here in private office. He wanted to be right out.
So I have a question on that topic. I wasn't going to bring it up today, but I think with that, and it's been mentioned, I'm going to go ahead and bring it up. If that's okay, if I got time. I'll make it real quick. So a lot of people, everybody that kind of gets met has to have a drainage approval through Donnie. And also, they have to go down and get what's called a property card through the assessor's office. So the process is, they come up to us, they start the process, and then, and they have to go back downstairs, which.
This is for a building permit?
Correct, and for other items. And that gets to, a lot of them get very irritated with it. And I kind of understand, especially some elderly folks have to go back downstairs, but.
I can understand getting irritated.
Yes, so I guess. In the future, if the community corrections room was to be changed around, however, if we could, if there was ever an opportunity, if we could have half of it, we wouldn't need the entire thing. We're too staffed. But they could literally go right across the hall to Donnie, and then back out to the assessor's office and do everything on the first floor. So just for future, maybe if it's ever an option, maybe five years from now, ten years. Like I said, I wasn't going to bring it up today, but since.
Well, since you brought that up, I'll bring this up. It used to be that they were going to put you, the APC and the surveyor's office too, so they could be working side by side.
I keep, I don't think in the basement.
There's no more room in the basement.
There's not?
No.
The office with Mike in the cage. But honestly, I wasn't going to bring that up today, because I know, I, I've just started the position, and I'm just trying to work through some stuff. But to me, it makes sense. You go, I went to a couple of courthouses and seen what they've done, and Peru, their courthouse is literally just right across the hall. They can do everything, they can just shoot pass, and they're done. So it's a matter of convenience. There'll be a lot of people that'll walk down the street, and they just leave. They don't want to come back. And then, to me, that's, I don't know if they're out there after the fact, going without a permit? Because they just didn't want to go through the hassle or not, so. I get it. We're happy where we're at, because, you know, we're not in our hair anymore, but at the same time, it makes sense that they can do everything right there in the same area. So, closing, I guess, if it's ever an opportunity, we would not need the whole order. That's a bit, we take it. Other than that, the main reason I'm speaking today is for approval, because.
Jeff, you got a comment on that?
Well, we've got so many computers in the courthouse, why can't we access the stuff we need from the assessor's office from your office? Why can't you access, print that off right there?
It's a separate.
Property damage.
He does not have the program for that.
So it's completely separate.
But you know.
Donnie's is completely separate, and there isn't.
We've got to go to Donnie's because he wants his money before he gets the permit, but I understand that. But I mean, the other one, I would think you'd be able to access it there. I never could figure out why you had to go back down there and get it, why you couldn't access computers in court, why you couldn't access it in one place.
Well, I'm not a server. I don't have, I don't have that, I don't know what he's looking for. So there's, it's not just the money incident. It's the process that he's looking for, culverts, grants. It's a completely separate.
The MVP system is only in certain offices.
With the property access card, I can't figure out why you couldn't access that anywhere.
That's what I'm trying to tell you. The MVP system is where you get the property access card. And it's only in, I mean, you probably could have him come over and get it at ours too, but I, that's really an assessor's responsibility.
And they have the opportunity while they're down there. There are some things that they can find that, oh, that, that's just, there's some things that they can see possibly before they come back up to us. With the assessments, assessments going on a three-year cycle, a four-year cycle, they might see something that we don't see, or, and so that, and that's happened a few times. So it's good that they go down there, like I said.
They can do the explaining of that.
Sure. But the main reason is for this, your blessing on this, I think it's going to be a great help to have someone here full-time.
So again, Ted, we need to just have a motion on this to accept it, or? To the, to approve the position?
Yes, sir. To approve the position and, and the description.
And it has been passed already by the council?
Correct.
The full-time has been for the council. They have not approved the job description yet. That will be the next step.
That'll be my next step, I think, if I agree.
They have approved funding, but they have not approved the.
Correct.
Probably should make the motion to approve the full-time positions and the job description as presented to the affecting January 2020.
Correct. That's my motion.
Okay, that's it, Luke. And I will second it. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate how you're operating officer, too. We have other commissioner actions down here, but there's a couple things I want to just stick in here right now. As I alluded to earlier, the judges and that part of the courthouse, I guess, probation offices and that are really in hopes that we include work release in the jail. And I just want to throw that out there, that it's, I think, it's something that, of course, when people like that come to you, it deserves your consideration. And so we, we should be looking at that and thinking about it. To us, if we want to decide to really have the architects work on that or not, we can talk, we could ask our architects how, follow Jeff's lead there. We could ask them how much it's going to cost us to have this redesigned now at this point, or have this included, and is it worth while? I know Steve threw out, the commissioner was not able to be here today, and shed a basement underneath the jail one time. And at first, I thought he was kidding, and I laughed, and the more I thought about it, he's not too far off on that, though. We're not talking about under the cells where something can grow out, but we're talking about under the administrative part of the building. That might be a very cheap space with storage space and everything down there, so. I don't know who's ever really gotten an answer. At that time, the architect was sitting out here, and he kind of smirked, and that was the end of it. So we need to pursue those, those two things, I think. And we, we're kind of criticized, I think, at one time, the commissioners for not proceeding with plans to move probation and everything down to the museum. And so we kind of collectively decided that, we still didn't know exactly what each one of those offices were expecting out of it, how much space they needed, and what we have to do to remodel for that. So we kind of threw it over to them and said, go down there, judges, probation, work releases, the other one is down here. Community corrections. Look it over, and you come back to us with a sketch and plan of what we're going to do. Well, they have come back now, not with the original yet, but with a floral report, and said, we don't think this is a good idea. The cost of rebuilding that, what was the auditorium area, then a museum area, into office space would be too high compared to just leasing a building somewhere, but I think they could get out of their grant money. And they, the judges definitely said, this is too beautiful, the space, too wonderful, the space. To go in there and start cutting up and dropping ceilings in and putting in partitions and all that, that should be used for something different than that. It's a beautiful area. Now, it's very nice to use right now for voting. We've got five in the floor that are voting, so.
Voting allowance. Well, the voting stands too.
Yeah. So the recommendation from the, from Judge Fauntz back was, I think you should go back to looking at putting the commissioner and council. Now, that was my position all along, but there was a lot of problems with that too, like access to the auditor's office is much easier here than it would be down there, running it down this hill here. If that needs something, like earlier today, there we had a, one of our claims was included, it's an easy walk over there rather than going all the way up. I suppose you could use the air column system to say, hey, look, break it down to me. Anyway, I'm throwing that out. This has been reported to me that they do not want to remodel the museum. And they are really, pretty arduously requesting us to consider making that into a, what was the intended for it? Was it, they're needing a large space that we need. Today, we don't need more people in here.
I'm concerned by hearing down there.
The roads are terrible in there.
Everything they need to, let her off to do something, I'm careful, and so use the old lounge for, if they found, if they found another facility.
the old lounge for, if they found, if the corrections found another facility, to use that for another public office, then use that for a lounge or, or it could be used for a, on a size thing, but we have another cap on upstairs.
Well, good to talk tonight, what we need to do.
As a council member, I would love to see, I love your idea of work release and the, because that generates income for the people that are in work release, and if, you know, whenever you guys decide to move on, talking to the architect about how much would that cost to make part of the new jail a work release facility, you know, you have my full support and.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir, it's a beautiful idea, and people really need that to, to make them feel worked while, I think, to, to go to work and leave and, and earn money for their families while they're incarcerated, they can, they can go to work, and it's just a wonderful thing for their persons.
I add that, um, excuse me, you go ahead.
How do you size them, like, how do you predict the size?
I'm not sure, you know, Tepi New County has a really nice facility, I went down and toured it and went through it, and I recommend that, you know, it's worth the half an hour to, to walk through it and listen to the guy that manages it talk about how much good he's doing with it, and, you know, they recently put in a new full-body scanner, and I don't know how they paid for it, but they did pay for it, and so when people walk through that full-body scanner, they no longer have the paraphernalia, the drugs, the knives, or whatever. So there is a way to, you know, address your point, Bill, about, you know, bringing things into the jail that shouldn't be in the jail. So, you know, again, they'd love to show you guys that facility, and they, you know, right now, if they, oh, get overcrowded in the Tepi New County Jail, there's some way they can move people, even people that don't go out and go to work, they can go over and kind of wait all day in the, in the work release facility, if, if they're not violent offenders. It, it's a great overflow, you know, situation, and, and I was surprised to hear that, you know, that you could.
I hadn't thought of that.
You know, some of the people don't even leave for work, they just kind of stay there all day, and, and so, you know, it's a very good tour that you could, you'd really enjoy, I'm sure if you went, went to it. But gee, I know it requires action on your part to talk to Mike at the architectural firm to, to see what that would cost, you know. You know, so, you know, I would think would, I bet you would have the council's support on that, because a lot of people like the idea of it, I, I think, I don't know what Ethan thinks.
I, I think that's definitely a great thing for the county, the work release program.
See, I, we, we're back, probably three sheriffs ago, by, yeah, three sheriffs, we talked about a work release program, but the numbers were, we didn't have all the numbers together, and when we started to look at the numbers, it didn't work.
Okay.
At that time, we were actually looking at what, right across from the high school was nursing home.
Right.
There, and we were looking at that.
That's still for sale too, by the way, but.
It is for sale?
Yeah, he'll sell it, for sure, probably about, I'll bet you could get him to about $250 on it. But, I'm not, you know, but again, you can talk to Mike about it too, and if you can put it in the jail, somebody, I think Fouts told me that it's a lot cheaper if you can keep that close to the jail or whatever, because it is a lockdown situation, when they come back in at night from work and they need to be locked down, you know, and so it's almost like a jail situation.
Right. And I think psychologically, it teaches a lot more of a lesson when the door climbs shut.
Good point.
Than if you're killed in a motel or whatnot.
Right.
Okay, so I appreciate that very much, yes.
I have very much support for that also, and thinking of the families, you know, pulled together, what's, what's the cost to the community when you take these families where they can't bring in money? Somebody's got to pay, somebody's got to take care of these families, and this is going to, this is going to make more of the families stay together more, rather than.
That's right.
I would think there should be some financial benefits, the bottom line somewhere, and you're talking about, didn't work three sheriffs ago, but we didn't have the drug problem we had now today.
It's escalated since then, you know.
And that's what the guy said today, you've got people in jail right now who are not hardened criminals, they're just a drug problem, we need to figure out how to fix that. During jail is not going to fix that, no.
If we could figure it out, we'd be the geniuses of the United States, we're everywhere.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, well, to, to take it from the devil's advocate side, one of the things that had been pointed out to me by some people is that, a lot of times, the people that could be on work release would only be a minimum wage type job out there, and they say, well heck, by the time I pay the work release fees and everything to do it, I just lay in here in a cot, and, you know, three hots and a cot in here, and I don't have to go out and work for a bit, but that doesn't take into account the one people I think you're talking about, as far as that have a job, want to keep that job, want to keep supporting your family, there has to be a lot of those.
Yeah, and some of them work at Alcoa, I've heard that they got a DUI, they need to, or their second DUI, you know, they need to be locked up for a while, but they could go to work, even in Lafayette, if they can, if the wife can pick them up, take them to Lafayette, to Alcoa, you know, it's a good job, they've already got it, they didn't lose it, if they lose their job while they're locked up, you know, then they come out and they're unemployed.
Right.
And it'd be better for them to stay working at that good job in, in Lafayette, you know, all they have to do is get down there. And that's up to the families a lot of times, I think, or a bus, you know, Tepi New County has several buses, you know, and they, they bus them up to a trailer factory up in Monon to, to work and, and while.
The trailer company also, Impactors, provides transportation for those guys, and it's taken out of their checks.
Good.
A lot of positives to work on.
One, one more thing I wanted to bring up, I think the, the snow removal, the custodian has a, I don't know, Lauren, you got a, are you guys going to bring that up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good.
Okay, let's just go right to that.
This is a.
Go ahead.
Sorry, it's just a separate thing, I wanted to bring this up earlier this year, and just to get around to it, if I wanted to. We got a quote for a snowblower attachment for the front of the John Deere, because if we use the blade right now, maybe we want to kind of change that to the blower, move more snow out of the way quicker, hopefully, and then there's the weather enclosure that goes with that, because you can't really blow snow without like getting yourself from the snow, the enclosure that goes on. The numbers are there, but the other problem is storage, which I wanted to point out. Max, I wanted to ask, do you remember earlier this year, I think it was this year, I, I might have brought up something about adding a second bay to this shed out here?
I don't remember, go ahead.
Okay, well, I, I think what you said about that was that there might be somewhere else you can store equipment, instead of adding a second bay, it might be a side replacement to store equipment.
Okay, just off the top of my head, is there a room in the basement, in the boiler room, you could back it down in there, drive it out the ramp? Would it go out the ramp? I don't know, I'm just thinking, it'd be nice more board down in there.
Yeah, that would be helpful, actually. Getting it up and down would be interesting, but, you know, you just have two people carry it, I think would be good. We could probably try, I think we could probably try and fit it down there, there's a lot of surface area down there, but.
Are they done working on the boiler yet?
No, actually, I, I talked to him today, he's supposed to be getting it apart, he's supposed to get it up last week, but with the holidays and stuff, he thinks it's just taking a long day, so he, he thinks he should get it all this week, and then we'll take it all down there as soon as it gets here.
You can also think of down here at the annuals garage, the rear part of that is a storage area that's used a lot by the sheriff or less, now, I don't know how it counts.
Right now, it's still pretty full, sir.
It's arming?
It's still pretty full.
Still pretty full?
Well, if it's pretty full, we can try the boiler room option.
Yes.
One thing with storing it in the boiler room is you've got gasoline stored down there.
Gasoline, that'd be a problem.
And that's.
That wouldn't be a good idea at all, you know, scratch that idea. Uh, let me play.
I, I look for them, yeah, sure.
Huh?
Yeah.
I don't know, the last time I was down here in the storage room, yeah, it was full, but the stuff that was down there could have gone in a quarter of that space, so, yeah, it's just a disarray.
They, they just did a huge cleanup down there.
But it's still full.
And there's, the back seats of all the cars are in there, but there's a trailer, the old dive trailer.
Is the inflatable boat still?
The Zodiac is still there.
Is there any air in the boat?
No.
That's what I thought.
One of the, well, one side, one baffle's full, the other one just got, yes.
They only need one side.
As long as you put everybody on the other side and.
Why do we even keep that back?
That's a conversation you need to have with the sheriff.
Every time I've been down there, we have an inflatable boat for emergencies, but there's no air in the boat, so it's just the bag hanging over the, over the trailer, and if you had to use it, probably would take an hour to pump it all up. We get some assets we can sell, in my opinion. Okay, so we've got a lot for, with this blower on it, it won't fit in the current building, right?
Talking about the shed?
Yeah.
It's pretty full, as it is, it's, it's a puzzle to fit everything together, it has to be, and I've made a lot of improvements on that, it's still pretty hard. The, while you're talking, I was thinking, maybe there's some way I can secure it to the side of the building, but I don't want to leave it out there for the sake of, it wouldn't look nice, and maybe there's some way to just make a small addition to the building, you know, there, not a whole bay, but just some kind of storage.
All right, I'm thinking, you're going to use this snow blower to surround the courthouse here?
Yeah, the courthouse and the ramps out here, and once you dry them, and I guess anything.
Sheriff's Department uses it along down there, or the annuals garage is used down there?
We also use a parking lot down there, and to be cheerful, we could, with a blower like that, probably get through there.
Okay, there would definitely be room for it, along with the health department trailer in the annuals garage.
Okay.
There's room in there for that, there might not be room for a coroner's van, but there's room for this mower blower in there. So you put the, you put the health department's van kind of, slouchways in there, and there's still room.
And I think if we, if we add this to the work that we've got, you probably have a rotation going, so where do we choose to store this thing? In the summertime, this little blower will be sitting in there, in the wintertime, the mower deck will be sleeping in there in that same spot, they're about the same size, everything's about the same size, and just, it's supposed to have each season.
So I guess the question for us in the bill is, are we going to buy a snow blower, right?
Yes.
Did you have an opinion on that?
I pledge to vote, to fund it if you vote to buy it, I think we need it, and it's definitely not good to be using, you know, the blade and the shovels and just, you know, move us forward as a county, you know, to get snow blowing into the grass rather than, you know, blade it into a pile that is hard to deal with.
Okay, with you? Mr. Ryder brings up a great thing, when you're doing it, you're going to blow it up onto the yard, not out into the parking area, right?
Exactly, yeah.
How wide of a thing is it? Fifty-four inch, so you'd take at least two baskets going around to do it.
How old's your parent, more?
It's ageable. It's definitely age, I'm not entirely sure exactly.
Is this blow, could it, could it do more, get more smoke?
Are you sure they're all compatible, it's just.
Probably just all made.
That goes on a quick chitch, yeah, piece, that goes on about in a month, you know, it's, it's always.
Thank you.
Seems pretty healthy. Eric, does that include adding some additional weights to the back, so you get traction?
It's got some weight on it now.
I just remember watching you last year trying to push, and you'd be spinning.
Yeah, I do good stuff, yeah.
So.
And I did some of that.
That's a weight issue.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Go ahead and get some real ones, you're saying, or also.
It, it's got real weights on it.
He didn't eat much turkey, that's not good.
He did, yeah.
Yeah, it would, as soon as you pick that up, you back it, so why, you know, fly from the back end, why? Well, I'm not, I'm bored, just working for a good amount. Yeah, do you have this in any of your accounts?
So actually, I don't have an account specifically for equipment, I just have one for repairing, if it exists already.
You use it already?
No, it's, it's almost entirely all still there, I barely had to use it this year.
Oh, you can get, it's almost entirely what?
The repair equipment that I started with this year, it's almost still, I, I'm not hardly used any of it.
We'll get transfers in there, yeah. Repair the equipment, do this.
How much is there? I believe about thirty-four hundred.
Thirty-four hundred?
Hey, is that all right? You know, I'd have to check.
How much is your John Deere? You got that quote on John Deere, right?
Yeah.
How much is it?
Four hundred and eighty?
Four hundred and eighty.
That's worth a twenty percent government discount.
I'd have to check exactly how much, because I know.
Where's the joint percentage discount?
That's what the air program is trying to fit this guy, is that on the blower, I don't see it here on blower, I see it on the backpack blowers, I don't see it on the snow blower.
Let me talk to him about that, make sure he gets that on there.
Should have, should have a discount out also.
There's no reason you'd be putting it on there, I'm sorry.
You need to check the simple, but in demo, I mean, you need to, all those questions they ask, you probably should check that out, make sure it's.
Those are good questions.
Do you want to put this off to the next meeting?
Yeah, because they have these installed, they probably do.
He made it sound like they did.
Right. We can, I'm trying to. Will you come back to us at the next meeting?
Yeah, I'll get some more stuff for it.
Might have more on that third discount, that's probably three hundred.
I'll make him clarify that, we'll figure out more about the way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, you.
I have a possibility, because I had a call from, uh, Felton, that's a, this is a phone I have drawn in, uh, change number. I hope we can get a match, it's cool, yeah. I bet we could do it today, he's incredible.
Seven acres, something like that.
Yeah, he's still, still is interested, so. Eric, I don't hear anything to tell you, going on that.
Now, I have a note here from Ted, says, Doug Axon, says, no agreement is needed with the local.
Right, he, I sent him while we were in the meeting, that graph, and he said the only thing that they're giving him for is conducting some classes, so there is no need for a legal agreement, so you can take that off, if you're with, we remember this, there won't be any need for that. So he has, given you the other document, the ordinance, the need for the temporary terms, and he'll read his comments to me and all, certainly.
So as he's saying, is there still some of the facility available?
Well, all they're doing is teaching classes, the board has got a building that they allow them to teach classes, so there's no, there are no need for, no agreement for that, it's just he's arranged. there are no need for an interim agreement for that, it just, he's arranged huge classes, so there won't need to be any interim agreement with the floor. And it has nothing to do with housing and Indians, by the way. It's my misunderstanding, I was confusing that with the Burlington thing, which we did earlier. So, I, while we were on the, I want to ask him about the Burlington garage, it's just a temporary situation, the annuals is going to be back in there, it had to do with some structural related issues, so definitely that's still needing to be used.
Okay, we have Delphi Library, Public Library Board Member Appointment. Apparently, we have a reappointment, because they may want to she started two years. There have been positions where we have not just automatically reappointed people, but we have requested that anybody interested in put their name in too. Now, this can be a double-edged sword, you all of a sudden, you got three good people from one spot, you know, but it can also open up our communities and having people who want to apply. I'm sure most people in the community don't know that there's a spot coming up on the Delphi Public Library.
I think we did ask for this the last time, and she, and she did apply.
Probably.
I think there was one other person that I don't remember.
So I guess, Lauren, with your permission, I'd like to say that we would like to put this appointment off for two weeks, and then see if anybody else is also interested in.
She, she's already sorted, has completed, completed two years.
We have, we have one good name here. Okay, um, next commissioner's meeting is December 16th, and we have a Grannis Board meeting also on December 16th. And the next county council meeting is Thursday, December 19th. And is there anything else anybody'd like to bring up before the board? Yes?
The tower that, the antenna we put on RMC for the radios went up and running last week. So we're doing some testing.
All right, you're going to say, "Didn't work at all."
No, 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 no. So we're just, we're doing the testing now to make sure, but the law enforcement said they've noticed an increase in some reception areas.
How's our whole project coming along on that one? The new consoles, yes?
All the parts are in, Raycom is wanting to customize it to our center, and we're still looking to be on schedule, the sheriff's location will be up and running by the end of the year.
Okay, and then the backup button will be done after that, right?
Yeah, it should be in January, we still are waiting on the agreement to give to Flora, for them to look over and sign as well.
Okay, Ted, you bring up the floor on putting our backup 911 over there, have they communicated with us any on that, or?
No, that may be what we're talking about.
Maybe.
Who's, who's in charge of that for, is it Cassie's?
Cassie, okay.
Yeah, the last I understood, that Ted was going to prepare something to give to them.